Mr. Standis.
Yes, can I give you?
No, actually, we're gonna ask all the cabinet members. If I could ask cabinet members and we have to come on up here, bring your chairs on up around the table so you're part of a whole conversation.
I'm asking for two.
This seat's available too.
Yeah.
There's a page right here.
So, do you need the projector?
Oh. Nice following with.
Yeah, why don't you just put it here? Just the board is aware because we're doing this on the same board time as that we can't stream live, so we're videotaping it and then we'll upload this to YouTube. Oh, that's not even there.
Here, I think, oh, thank you.
Right, I'm gonna turn off the music right over here. Does that make it easier for you guys to see? All right, wanna get a soft drink?
Good evening. So, thank you guys very much for allowing the time to get this happening. Like, I do think, I mean, I know you've been talking to schedule, but I think it's perfect to keep some sense of momentum and not like push some stuff in the session, so I'm glad that we're able to get this scheduled and appreciate the time here. So, you know, just to review, as we've been going back looking at this strategic plan, we're not suggesting that we revisited the plan in its entirety that was put forward to help the district management group in 2016. That was, that was published as a five-year plan, so we may not be that far away from wanting to go back to the new district, the entire plan. This was really more trying to figure out what was the measures and metrics which would play a place to, to assess how well we're doing against the plan that we established. So, the only things as we started through this process last school year, we suggested were a couple minor sort of wording changes, instead of student achievement to, to, um, challenge student success. Student achievement seemed to be correlated with proficiency on normed tests. And then the second one, effective and engaged staff, is we just added the way to retain a higher level of universal workforce. So, the last time that, that we met as a group, we, we broke into small groups and we had going around to the stations for, for 10, 15 minutes kind of discussing areas and pillars. And we talked about the idea of confirming our values and, and.
Oh.
Did I just something?
Uh, for what? Yeah, sorry, Brian, that was gonna break your stride, sorry.
What was I saying? Okay, and then, um, the idea of coming up with what we call like measures that matter for each, each of the thematic categories. So, tonight, then, um, what we thought was one thing that would help is we wanted a layout, kind of a timeline for milestones that we want to achieve before the end of this school year, starting with, with the expected outcomes for tonight, and then sort of building up to the ultimate goal before the end of this school year is to have new measures, metrics, reporting process established through the board that we can then share with our school leaders at, at year-end administrative meeting. And that's important because that will roll straight into the school improvement work beginning next school year. And typically, there's a couple all-day sessions right after school wraps up in late, early June. So, we want to make sure that the schools are aware of any, um, any measures that are gonna establish, any measures that are gonna be collected, so that they can back to that in their work.
All right, I'll leave you. Any more questions?
I think what I was gonna say. Yeah, the greatest thing is, is to understand that student success is where our schools really drive their school improvement work from. And so, to be able to give them that finite direction because as the people, the liaison from you all the way to the schools, that is what we tell them all the time. You know, the, the form of education designs a strategic plan that then drives all of the work at our schools. So, again, that's why we would like to kick this off because they start planning for the 2021 year right away than at the conclusion of this school year. So, again, even though it seems like a very tight timeline, there is an actual purpose behind that timeline.
So, last time, I know, one thing that we got tripped up on a little bit, and I think it's definitely our fault, ideas is being a little twisted around the definitions of measures versus metrics. So, this is something I found that I thought may, may kind of help frame the discussion because tonight, we're gonna definitely be, be trying to nail down what we're considering as measures. And I think, you know, according to this graphic, and this is just one illustration that I found, it seems to kind of line up with the way that we're approaching this, is that measures are like the broad types of information that we are going to use to establish a common understanding of this as the status, condition, or the position of students. So, basically, the, the general health of our district in these different areas, what types of information we don't want to collect. And once we have consensus around, around the measures, the next step then is to come up with specific metrics, which are the, you know, specific units of measure, thresholds, targets, specific data points then that we would hold ourselves to. So, I think if we can get the measures confirmed tonight, then we could go off as a team, we could start working on the metrics, and then come back to you at, at enough points to hear the specific metrics that we, that we.
So, could you give an example, Chris?
Yeah, so I think, sort of like, one that I have as an example here would be, we've talked about having a more diverse teaching staff that, that better reflects our student body. So, that could be the measure, is if we want to measure the diversity among our teachers. And then maybe the specific metrics are, do we want to increase the percentage of, um, diverse teachers every year by X percent? Do we want to hire a certain number of diverse teachers every school year? So, then we have to know how would that measure that.
It's the specifics of what that means.
Exactly. Does that, does that help?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, what, what we did to, to start then is, from the session that we had on November 11th, we had, one of our, our cabinet members was sort of taking notes from each of the stations that you guys rotated around, where we, where we talked about each of the four different pillars. And we tried to summarize what, what we, what we believe we heard in terms of the common themes that, that showed up across all the different, different teams. So, I think some of these are gonna be more, um, probably a little bit, I don't know, self-explanatory is the right word, but are probably things that we would expect to see under each of these, and there are others that are gonna take a little bit more discussion. And Melissa, I thought, you, you sent us some really good questions over the weekend and things that we were hoping we'd get into during the discussion tonight. So, I mean, even with your student success, the last, the last bullet point is more flexibility in student choice. We, we heard this, I think, from almost every group around, and some, and some semblant of that. And yet, that, that's a tricky one because there's lots of different ways to measure that in that column. That could, that could mean a lot of things in a district like ours, so, you know, I think the, the pathways work that we're doing could be part of this. But could it be things like school choice, and could it be magnet schools at, at the elementary and middle school levels? Could it be blended learning or other sort of alternative models? I mean, this could, this could mean a lot of different things. So, I hope, you know, what we have in mind when we say things like that will then kind of shape how we would set up measurements that would, that would determine how well we're doing to provide that for our students, I guess. The other one that happened there in the, in the second column that we've, we've heard more and more is this idea of capturing a student voice, um, and whether that's through surveys, focus groups, other ways that we need to get students more involved and kind of hear their questions on, on how we're doing as a district. I know we presented our equity plan work to the CEO of student advisors, and I thought the questions and the conversations, it was awesome because it's like they, they would ask some, they weren't, they weren't embarrassed to ask any question and presume some sort of knowledge, and yet it sort of like forced us to be at the top of our game because we had to answer questions that we weren't getting necessarily when we were going with this as what's the results.
So, so that they want the same presentation provided to the whole student summit that's gonna be held in March, so they want to bring it forward to hundreds of students.
Yeah.
Sorry, I think that hurt you.
Yeah, I think that's great. So, then, what, so what we want to do then for tonight, I mean, these are sort of the broad themes that we thought we captured, and then we'll just go into each of the areas and, and we will sort of tee up some potential measures and, and get your, your feedback. And then, like I say, if we have, we have sort of general agreement that we're, that we're on the right track, and that these are the right types of things that we should be monitoring, then we as a team can go off and define these metrics and come back to you next time with those. So, for the first category of student success, uh, the way the strategic plan is aligned, we still do have the two different priorities, so we have the one about challenging standards-based curriculum across all our content areas, and the other one about providing measurement safe learning experience, flexible approach, and moving academic, social and educational issues. So, we just have listed here, you know, sort of our, our proposed types of measures that we can have to, to gauge success against each of these areas.
Yeah, so two of the main comments we heard here were, one, that there needs to be an equity component, and then the other one was early childhood. And for measures, uh, to address early childhood, we do have KIDS and MBE, which covers kindergarten and first grade. There isn't anything explicitly in there for pre-K, but it is something that, that we could discuss. And then, for the equity component, um, we could, we have two, two options. We could, and we don't have to decide these today because they were on what we're measuring, but what we could do when we get to the metrics is we could weight in an equity component into it, or we could report things by different groups. So, like, you know, here's the data for all the different groups that we've identified. So, but those are options we can discuss more in the metric phase where now we just want to make sure we have the, the right items on the board.
So, you're saying we want to look at student growth, academic proficiency, and growth as a measure?
And what we had listed here, if it does matter, is we're thinking at a minimum all of these different proficiency measures because we can report them by specific student groups, so we could report African-American students, students with IPs, English learners, kind of the same way we do the best student growth measure for, for our student evaluation. And I think that's, that's one way we would get at the, achieving that data, and I believe that is, your question is wrong.
Yeah, I, I think one concern that I have, part of it, I'm not, I don't know that I'm fully sold on, on looking at these as indexes, but that's, that's another discussion. But I'm concerned, like especially with the equity views, and, and we're gonna be looking at this tonight during, um, during the board meeting tonight, that if we're looking at these four things individually, so we've got academic proficiency, and we've got academic growth here, and then on the next slide, my computer's not working, so I don't, I can't reference it, but, um, the culture index, and I'm assuming that there's, you know, other things in that culture index that kind of inform the data that we're going to get on the proficiency and growth. And so, I'm concerned that if we look at these four things, we're not going to get a full picture of how, like, maybe discipline disparities are affecting academics. Like, how do we take two things that are in two different realms and yet understand how one is affecting the other?
Yeah, I, I think for the, I mean, the culture index, from the note that you sent over the weekend, we talked, we said, I think that the, things like maybe out of school suspensions or other sort of discipline data, to see the disparities, I think that could make a lot of sense here, absolutely.
But are we then going to be able to, you know, then how, I mean, and this is probably the metric discussion, right, but how do, how do we tie those two things together if they're sitting in two different index scores? That, in my mind, I can't.
So, would you want to see like the number of the kids who, the academic achievement of kids who are more likely to be referred versus those who aren't? Is that what you're figuring out?
Right, is there a correlation there, or is there something that we're, like, you know, does, does it need a metric that looks at that somehow? And I don't know the answer to that, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out. Like, I, you know, not everything that happens in, that affects academics is solely measurable by test scores, right? There's other things going on, especially social, emotional stuff that's going on that is probably, if we look at the data right now, is probably having an outside effect on academics. And so, how do we get to that?
So, there, there, I mean, certainly there's research out there that would indicate like the, the ideal percentage for attendance rates for students, right, to, to give optimal opportunity for learning, the greatest learning outcomes. So, things we can, we can look at, right, or we can ask the question, or we can think about how far we can research that would be, how do we, how do we measure, right, obtain, quantify instructional minutes for students, like throughout an entire day, or also within academic areas, right? And, and look at it again from an asset-based approach where we want students to have as many minutes or as much optimal instructional time in classrooms as possible, to try to give us some, some, you know, answer the question, is there a correlation? Do we see a correlation? We would expect to see so. The more time that students are able to be in a classroom receiving instruction, our, our, our theory, right, would be that there should be outcome to match that. So, as a system, can we, can we monitor that? Can we, can we manage that, that data? Can we look at that? Are those things we can pull from infinite campus? Are they not? You know, and, and to include absences, but also include, um, times that students are pulled from class, or are not able to attend class, or perhaps resolution meetings for, for behavior.
Right. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not getting, you know, when we look at these indexes, that we can still.
So, that's a question, right? That's a, that's a needed question. Is that something that we can build?
Right.
I wonder if another way to think about what you're saying, Melissa, is like, you're, you're talking about the relationship between phenomena, and I wonder if organizations, another way they do that is to identify explicitly a logic model at play in these different factors. And so, maybe one of the things you're asking us to think about is, kind of, what's the logic model at play? What is our understanding, our, our theory of how relation, the relationships between these different measures? And, and then there might be some specific kind of metrics at the student level even, where we're being, saying, given our logic model of the relationship between these phenomena, here's how the data needs to be reported back to see how we're doing. So, I think that that's really helpful to, you know, to ask us to think about how these different inputs are related, and to be explicit in some kind of a theory of, of practice.
Yeah.
So, realize that there is a difference between priority one and priority two, right? So, priority two is really, that's why we're struggling with that, right? So, that priority one talks about providing the standards-based curriculum across all content areas. So, I'm gonna try and keep us here for a minute to see if we even think that these are the best measures for, you know, satisfying that priority.
Well, these are the ones we know, right?
Right, that's why, is there any?
There's others that we, there's other local, other common formative systems that we have, but is there something even beyond that that we need to start, right? Is that what you're asking?
Right, is there anything different? So, we had a conversation about.
Sorry, sorry.
Are you gonna say what our conversation was, you can?
I'm not sure.
So many of them.
What I was gonna say is, but I kind of lined it up into measuring it by these, these outputs, is that it takes some of the subjectivity out of it, right? Because if we say, if we're gonna support a standard, challenge a standard-based curriculum, if we did some sort of audit, we say, yes, we're going to all over our content areas and check that box, but yet the results aren't there, it still feels like there'd be, we'd have to disconnect somewhat, right?
Right, so I'll add to that. So, what we also discussed was the idea that this allows us to take a look at ourselves in terms of where we are in the state of Illinois, with students within Illinois, as well as nationally, right? Because, um, as, as a parent of a student, I would want to know how they actually compare to others. Can they compare, or can they compete in a wider society other than just amongst ourselves in U-46? So, when you take these out to a normative type of assessment, that's what you're allowing for.
How does, how do we ensure fidelity in the instruction? I don't know what measures, but that's, for a teacher, evaluation or something, or how do we, how do we do that?
We had, we had some ideas when we gave it the next one, like effective and engaged staff, around how you, you know, I think it's maybe that's effective staff, hard even though it's not, because it's, we had a few ideas that we wanted to share, but I, I do think it's a, it's a tough one.
Because this is really looking at that, maybe this is what the priority is, but we're looking at the measures to see if that is accomplished, not about, or the outcome of that, not what there is actually.
But fidelity, that would, so if you had disparity in data, I'd want to make sure that you had fidelity first in the instruction, and I don't know if we're skipping over that. So, it's just what came to my mind when I looked at this. Consider for.
Yeah, so, I mean, there are a number of things we could, we could look at. You can certainly look at teacher evaluation, that, that's, that's one item, right? But depending on where the focus is within our, in our, in Danielson domain, I mean, not actually focus on those, on the curriculum or the content. But there are other things, you know, some of the things that we're even researching around, you know, classroom, classroom visits, learning visits, learning walks around the building, should identify some of that. You know, other pieces as well would be some perception data. So, when you think about surveys and, and surveying staff and surveying students, and we've started to do some of that, that research and look at some of those pieces as well, realizing that's a different type of, of data set, right? That could be information. But, you know, one of the pieces for us, another, another question to ask here, does it, uh, we're looking at what's, at, at these, it says also measured, right, recorded by student group. One of the questions for us would be, what other information, right? Does it have to be data in the sense of it's, it's this type of data in a traditional, traditional sense where we're gathering and collecting it from type one nationally normed assessment data? Or what other information could, would be agreeable, acceptable to become leading pieces of information in, as a school system that we, that we want to look at, at a regular ongoing basis to tell us that this work is happening? You know, and so, could it, could it be some of that other data?
Does anything come up when you're doing the, the data meetings with schools? Because, you know, when I look at this, I guess, Suzanne said, I mean, it's, these are test scores.
Right.
And so, how are we capturing what's actually going on in a classroom day-to-day?
I think for a good example would be the common formative assessments that teachers are supposed to be implementing in their classrooms because that is the data that's closest to the child and closest to that moment in time. So, they're getting more regular feedback using our common formative assessments, more so than the dipstick, three times a year doing a math test or two times a year doing a math test.
So, should the full of the assessments be in that practice?
So, it's something we could, I mean, that's more of a leading indicator than a, especially an IAR that comes once a year and you get the results six months later. It is closest to the students, and you can do more regular reviews to make sure that the instruction is fidelity. So, we could put together a list of those and bring them in and, and consider, consider those as well.
I think common assessment is, is, is a good way to measure, as you said, day-to-day. It also gives you feedback on the teaching of those, of those, the teachers because, you know, whenever we have common assessment, it's like, okay, this classroom did good, this classroom didn't, you're supposed to be pretty much teaching the same thing. So, then you go back and you look at the individual teacher, well, how did you teach this lesson to the students? And this is the performance that they made. So, I think that's something that could have on going throughout the school year. I mean, like, we used to get common assessments like every two weeks, and that was a lot of feedback to adjust your teaching, or you consult with another teacher, well, how did you teach, teach this lesson? So that you can make sure that you're teaching the same thing, the same way, you get the same results that you wanted to get for, for all the kids.
But the only caution I would have is that if teachers are using it the right way and ensuring that their students, you know, are learning the skills that were embedded within that assessment, so, did my kids get it or not get it? So, I have an opportunity that if you teach them, I don't want it to become, I'd hate for the common formative assessments to then become the summative designation for the teacher and say that the teacher didn't do their, their part. If it continues, I mean, but if over time you don't see improvement on the students based on the common formative, and I think it gets to, to your point very well. But I, I would, I would urge against trying to make one or two common formative assessments to say that, oh, you're a bad teacher.
Yes.
Yeah, you call it carefully that, but otherwise, I think it might be useful.
But also AP results versus grades in AP classes. Got a discrepancy, you know, kids get an A in AP history against two on the AP test. Who does that say?
So, we had some AP information under the, the secondary outcomes, but I think we weren't specifically looking at that this area.
Am I allowed on this one? I'm very confused right now. Okay. I'm frazzled.
Get a chair.
Hold the chair. I'm in, I'm in, I don't wait, no, it's still on right now. I am here.
Hallie, we're doing the strategic plan work session. I apologize if you didn't talk about the.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I hope I'm not like crazy, but I am here now. It's okay. Wonderful. Glad you're here.
We're just going through the, you were here for our strategic plan discussion last time. This is us just coming back, trying to clarify and come up with some, some possible measures that we can consider as a. I'm sorry, Sue, I think you were, you were talking about the difference between grades given, like you get an AP class, but then you get a two on the exam. So, has a potential.
And then even AP alone, again, the kids who take the tests may depend on finance to stop two, maybe pay for a test, some kids may get one, but to figure out why more kids are like, don't take the test.
Well, I mean, if I can talk in personal experience as to why you don't, it's mostly because you don't think you'll pass it, so you don't want to waste the money.
And I got something to whether we've, we've done a good job teaching it, yeah?
I think AP classes are extremely difficult to teach, and I, for my, for my, I'm in five right now, six, depending on how you count, yeah, I know, big mistake. It's, I don't like how everything is so cramped, it's such a small amount of time, to struggle for teachers to get through, to struggle for students to learn it. So, it's, you know, like, you'll see, like, the dropout rates at, like, I'm sure from, like, at the end of first semester, like, in AP physics, both, you get two AP physics classes, half of the class dropped in my class, and the same thing for the other class. I think they had more. And it was like a really full class at the start of the year. So, it's mostly like, everyone's told, oh, you'll be fine in the AP class, you know, you'll do great. And then you get into it and you realize, this is a lot, even though it was proposed that you'll be able to handle it, even though you won't be. So, then you like drop, and then you're like, oh, I'm not taking the test, seeing what the class is actually like.
So, the persistence rates could be something that we look at as well, year. That's a good point.
That's.
Their numbers would have been skewed even more if the kids had stayed, had stayed in the class season were not successful.
Yeah, and I know it's really, really hard to get out, I don't know how much it is now, sort of a couple people doing it this year, of making it a bit easier of a process. Um, it used to be like really, really hard to drop out of the class. Like, they'd fail you for that semester if you dropped out of it. So, like, let's say you have a C in the class and you want to drop that semester, they'll give you an F, even though you had a C then. And then it's just like, well, you got this fairly great, or you stay in it, and you're just completely failed. A bit of a struggle, but for me, like, I'm not taking AP tests, I'm not taking two of them, just because I have so many AP classes, but I highly doubt. I'm not taking two of them, just because I have so many AP classes, but I highly doubt that that's the issue, because people come to.
I wonder if an example of an equity metric embedded in that then is, given the persistence rates or the drop rates, disintegrating that data, pre and reduced versus non-pre and reduced by race or by racial ethnic group? What are the patterns in either group? Those are how, examples of how we always look with that fine lens of what's happening across our subgroups of students.
I only have one question. So we've, we've thrown out a lot of ideas, and my only piece of caution is, whatever we're tossing out there, it's not saying that we can't measure that and we can't bring that to you. It's the idea that then there's all these different measures, right? So how do we really narrow down these thoughts to really give us a good set of measures that would start us off in the correct direction on each of these priorities? Right? Because once we go down that path and we take a look at it and then we say, you know what else would be a nice lagging metric behind there would be this piece of information? Because there is nothing that prevents you from doing that and asking for, you know, an annual report on that particular metric. Or can you give us more information to help us make a decision, a very informed decision? But the leading measures that we want to make very public are these.
So thinking of leading indicators, if we're looking at, at it from that lens, I mean, one of the struggles I have with five essentials is it's so far removed from the actual engagement that it's, you know. Like, one of the ones, when we get to employ engagement, if you look at the Q twelve that you do on a regular basis, it becomes a leading indicator rather than one that you get months and months later. So on leading, I mean, attendance, certainly, the common formative assessments would be more of a leading indicator, more so than IAR anyway. What are some of the other ones that the team would think through that would be leading indicators?
If we're looking at this one, even the secondary outcomes, some of the, you know, the initial application, being algebra freshman track, it doesn't lead you.
That is leading for, for high school success.
And I think the AP discussion we just had, you know, here we just say AP enrollment, but if we wanted to look at enrollment versus test taken versus, and then prepared by student group, by student group.
And should that be in the priority two or priority one? Cause a lot of the secondary outcomes, looking at, they strike me as being more priority one. And when I think of priority two, when you talk about, for example, safe and learning environment, I think about things like referrals and discipline.
But as you, Sue, you're gonna say, that, that whole secondary outcomes block, most of that stuff feels more like priority one. And really just the, the culture in there, that feels more like priority two.
Right, and then I would ask some sort of discipline or something in priority two, and this is my thoughts.
I think this goes back to what Melissa was raising, in terms of the relationship between priority one and two.
Well, and if we're, you know, if the, I know we're looking at leading outcomes, but when you talk about secondary outcomes, there's nothing in here really that, I mean, there is the National Fairness Day and college persistence. I mean, like, nothing that really looks at anything else. Is a secondary outcome what, you know, what we can expect from our students once they graduate? Or is a secondary outcome, like, are we looking at entry into high school or are we looking at exit out of high school?
Uh, it really has both. So it, they're written almost in, not quite chronological there, but really starting eighth graders completing algebra. Because passing algebra, whether in middle school or, you know, first year of high school was a key indicator of graduating on time or gateway to higher level math. And then freshman on track is, you know, once again, right, you know, leading up to graduation, right? They're not on track, not graduating. So they're, they're all, like, those are related to graduation rate. And then the seal, AP, early college and career credentials, those are all kinda like that, that college going rate. So those are more post-high school, so it's like leading up to and after graduation.
I think it's also, you know, there, these are some research-based indicators, but also aligned to the college and career readiness indicators for the state of Illinois. So Illinois has, has kind of a, taken a more holistic approach as opposed to just measuring college readiness by one test score. Measuring college and career readiness by multiple indicators that include a lot of these pieces. I don't, I just add, and they're college as well as persistence.
Well, then maybe it should be called something different than secondary outcomes.
Maybe it's college and career readiness?
Yeah, because when I look at that, I mean, you know, I'm looking at, you've got eighth graders over here, you've got college, and like, you're, it just seems like it's too muddy to me. We're not honing in on, you know, what are we, are we looking at how prepared people are to go into high school? Or are we looking at how prepared our students are going to the real world? Which one are we looking at?
Or both.
Or both, but, but, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe that eighth grade completing algebra, maybe that's more truly a, a academic, you know, that belongs on the first page. Where some of these other things do belong on a college readiness, college and career readiness.
Freshman on track may also be along under the academic, it's what, you only fail in one class, it's a possibility.
So if we're coming back to, if we move the college and career readiness indicators back to, to number one and narrow those down to which ones are the ones that are leading? Remembering that most of those are also on the state report card, so it's not that we're not gonna get them, and it's not that we're not going to review them or have them available to us, but which ones apply best to our strategic plan? And then for the priority two, if we were to come up with, recognize that five essentials is wonderful, it's a wonderful tool, it's great. I, I don't wanna scrap five essentials. Gives us a lot of great data, but it is a really lagging indicator. But if we were to come up with some ongoing, you know, I don't know, surveys, something that gets student voice around, do they perceive their environment to be nurturing and safe? And this also ties into effective engaged staff. Do they also feel nurture, a sort of nurturing and safe learning experience within their walls as well? Maybe there is some surveys that we could, we could work to do that do regular dipsticks, just to see how we're, how we're doing that might align to the five essentials, but get ahead of it a little bit. That way we know, building by building, how are we performing? I don't know if it's just an idea, something that would at least make what's currently lagging something that's leading and actually gives us much better data that we can address.
We kind of started to get that a little bit, we kind of engaged staff. This is, this is at least where we captured the discussions last time, this need to consider student voice. And so, you know, I just said here, establish a channel, maybe this is a survey. We capture student voice regarding our district, schools, courses and teachers, but it could also be, obviously, if you, if you break into some of the five essentials, that's a question here. But I think we probably have a lot of flexibility, but this is what we're like, depending on what we're hoping to get from it.
Okay, I'll saw throughout, one of the cabinet discussions, and we looked at this a few years ago, the Gallup organization does a Q twelve survey that they actually administer. That looks at the twelve areas that they consider to be the most engaged staff, which includes things like, I feel comfortable, it's right in my work environment, I have a friend at work, I have the supplies, materials that do my, my job. So they've got this research-based, which was one that we were considering at least evaluating and bringing back to the board as a, as a possibility of a way to measure that.
Yes, that, if we'd captured last time, it's a four data point, it's the, as you're respecting, one way to do that, certainly would be employee engagement survey, one could make people Gallup survey. And then I think, you know, from our discussion as a cabinet, when we talked through some of this feedback, I think it's also important that you do that, though, to publish the results with our sort of reflections. And like, these are the things that we're going to look to do next school year because of what we heard. You know, like, otherwise if you just give another survey and nobody knows what happens with the data, you know, really, they'll lose any sort of respect, right? So, so we jumped into, so in fact, effective engaged staff, I mean, one thing that came up in our last session and then, you know, it's coming through, you know, really, uh, one of our highest priorities from the Equity Committee's work, I think, is to increase the diversity among our staff. So I, I think that that's one that, the current metrics, I mean, this to me is one example that, why I say I think it is important for that committee to visit these metrics, because we really, we don't have any metrics to track that right now. Even though I think we all know that it's important, that we know it's an area that we're out of balance right now. So I think to have some sort of, of metrics that's gonna, gonna track that is, is gonna be important. And we've been talking about this as a, as a team, the Equity Group, and I know Ann, Ken, and the HR team has definitely, you know, been really involved in these discussions, so I think we've got some ideas. But that one's, feels like we're definitely gonna want to include. And then, yeah, this consideration for student voice, I don't know, I just, I feel like that's, that's an under-tapped source of information that, that we, we can do a lot more here. So I, I think we, we would, we would have to do some investigation, if we're, the best way to capture student voice, whether it's surveys or focus groups or, or some combination. But I think once we have that information, I think that would be another important data point for us to monitor. And then for the second priority under effective engaged staff, this cultural proficiency, and again, from, from the Equity Committee's work, this is something that we identified is, is establishing some professional development modules or courses that we would want all of our staff to take. Particularly anybody who has direct interaction with students, but we've really talked about this direction for, for every, every forty-sixth employee. And so then I think, once we have some of those courses identified in place, then to have percentage of staff who completed these modules on time would be another one that we can, that we can easily track. And that would be a good, good metric of how well we're, we're on in, in just this priority.
And this, this is actually gonna be a topic during the presentation tonight, I know this quarter asked questions, I think several quarters asked questions around this. And we, we know that implicit racial bias training is a requirement of the state and is currently being handled through the GCN tutorials, which is about a fifteen-minute online. You watch a PowerPoint and then you answer questions. And we know that that's not enough to really change, it's not enough to change behavior. It's not enough to, to inform our practice, and so that's one area that, that would have to go deeper, that we all agree.
Yeah, we had a discussion about this, where we said, like, if we did this type of PD rate, there should be some people who are like kind of not really uncomfortable and who, who hate it. And some people who feel like it's some of the best PD they've ever, ever seen or anything. I think now, if you have to any of us from GCN, could we remember one thing about the GCN model that we created that was just?
The appendix weighted to blood toward passage of training, so.
It's true.
Well, I know the cultural training that I had in another district was, it was three sessions a year. And that was some time ago, because they invested a lot of money. But you got a relief day, a half-day, and I don't know how you would do that in this district. But I mean, you went in with one mindset and you came up with another, not just your own, but you understood by trying to sit in the seat of someone else in situations? And then asking a series of questions and role-playing and everything else, to get a better understanding of culture, diversity and everything else. And then when this situation happens, what do you do, how do you feel? And it was, it was intense. And you came out having to do a lot of reflecting and guilt.
So you're asking the priorities three and four, are these the good measures?
These direct measures, right?
Yeah, are we missing anything? We're gonna say, we definitely tried to, to go through all the notes that were taken from the last time we met. And they say that the themes that seem to be showing up come from all the groups, we kind of did our best to capture these, but if there's anything that you guys feel like we missed, I think that's what we're hoping to surface tonight. Because if not, I think we've got some ideas already in terms of metrics that we could, that we could play a place, assuming that this is kind of the right direction.
Is that okay if I go back to something? So if you go back to priority three, the first one, and I, I heard what you said, I'm also thinking like, okay, a lot of times whenever you're trying to recruit a balanced staff, I mean, you go to certain places, okay, and you recruit. Though I think you have to be intentional if you want to, you want to, you wanna make sure that you have a diverse staff. You need to say, okay, I'm a partner with a certain school that has a large population of certain teachers coming out of there. So that when they graduate, at least you know, this is a school that's accredited, you know they have a great teaching curriculum or whatever, and the graduation rate, you know? And then you try to partner with them so that you can grab those students, and they might not necessarily be in state. You grab those students as they graduate and you bring them into your district. And then you train them, you give them that opportunity, if you're looking for members, they have to interview them about it. It won't just happen.
Would that, would that be a strategy for how we would achieve it, or do you think it'd just be a measurement?
Well, I'm just saying, if you want a diverse staff, you're gonna have to go seek them out as to what college or whatever has diverse group of teachers, you know what I mean? I mean, there are HBCUs, which is historically black colleges, that have great teaching, that graduate great, graduate great teachers with, you know, high standards. And so, I mean, that might be something you might have to seek out there. I mean, I know some districts, they actually go to Spain or to wherever, or Mexico to recruit teachers. Yeah, so you don't have to necessarily go out of the country.
So do you want that as a measure?
So if it was to be measured, we'd increase the number of universities with which the district partners for the purpose of increasing diversity or something along those lines?
Something like that.
The right.
Yeah, I think that's, that's about right. There, there is lots of work to be done, you know, as you shared with us, you know, school districts partnering with universities and colleges, so is everybody else, right? So all the other large school districts are doing the same, but that's not to destruct the fact that we have to build those relationships. And I think another thing that we need to, to think about, and this may be a little bit down, further down the pipeline, is that we have the biggest solution for our teaching force, to solve our teaching force, we're a diverse student population. So when we do priorities one and two right, priority three, we'll see the fruits of that effort. So then, how do we then tie everything together? We have such a robust reflection in our student population, why not to, we also reflect our teacher population? How do we get our eighth graders into freshman on track, into college readiness, complete a four-year traditional program and come back to us as teachers? So there's a little bit, long way down the pipeline, and, you know, this is really exciting work for us to be into, to embark on. I, I want to, I'm a little reserved, you know, building X amount of relationships up there, because we are competing with everybody else. What, what is the yield that we can get out of that? So I just want to be online, go through those types of metrics.
I know that internally, we've had a lot of success in growing administrative, more diverse administrative body. And a lot of that is very, a lot of intentional steps, and a lot of it was driven by Steve Berger, who came up with the aspiring administrator program and was very deliberate with the, with the types of, of people that he sought out for that program. And so, I mean, I can't give him props, but it shows you that what we can do when we're very deliberate about the programs and how we can grow our own internally, if we just put our minds to it, so.
And props to you, Susan.
Props to the team.
Before some. Well, yeah, I think we would, wouldn't mind a five-minute, four-minute break between, between open and open, but, but yeah.
Well, I guess I was just checking, as we, cause I think we've had some good discussion on the first two, we saw the two other pillars.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I didn't know, in the odd sense of the feeling, right? So the, you know, the next one is, is around community engagement, and I want to, that feels some, some good feedback in this area as well. So what we talked about, increased participation of parents in school and district communities and diverse participation. I think these in terms of like aspirational sort of goals and things that we should be measuring, I feel like that the right kind of things. Some of these are gonna be a little bit harder to measure, so maybe you could say, this, this idea of like non-traditional parent engagement, we need our parents who are very engaged in their kid's education, but they're doing a lot of it from home. How do we, how do we capture that, how do we measure that? I, I think we've got some work to do to figure out how, how we can put that into a. I think we've got some work to do to figure out how, how we can put that into a single number or a set of numbers, that it feels like the right kind of things that we're looking at. Then it just doesn't, we have tools where we could definitely set goals to increase two-way parent communication and attract the usage, whether it's through the campus parent portal, Google Classroom, ClassDojo, we're looking to invest in a learning management system eventually the next year, which would have the parents of you into all of their kids' classes and upcoming assignments and rubrics and standards and objectives and all sorts of other things. But I think, you know, with these tools in place, we could certainly assess and target ourselves to increase parent engagement through those channels.
I think as we do that though, we have to keep in mind that there's a certain point, at a certain point you've now given the parent too many things and they're going to, what their hands are not be a part of it.
I was just about to say that, just from like a student perspective, like, I don't mind my mom having like a campus, but I know a lot of parents are super, super strict and as a student, like, having, you know, you're coming into adulthood and you're trying to get some more control in your life, like, let's be honest, you know, I'm a teenager, I can do what I want, like, that mentality is a real thing, you want to have some independence. And if your parents can see literally every single assignment you're getting, that's going to be first of all a lot for the parent, because just the amount of homework I get, they're not, it's just going to be too much for them to even look at. But as a student, it's going to be like, I don't, I don't need my mom to know every single assignment I have, because then every five minutes she's going to come up to me, tell me to do this assignment, Hallie, have you done this assignment? It's just going to cause a lot of stress from the student and being like that naggy parent. And I feel like it's just going to make the students angry. Like, it's a good thing to have parents engaged, but how much is too much?
And that explains why parent engagement drops off between middle and high school.
Yeah.
It is. Mom, stay. Anyway, don't come to school.
I almost think like a good indication of that is, like, obviously, parents come to like parent teacher conferences, because I just look at my option, is always super engaged with our education. But like now that we've hit high school, she does, she's like one of the few parents that I hear actually still going to parent teacher conferences at high school level, because, you know, you think your kid's older, you don't need to be there at those types of events. So I wonder if we have to find a way to encourage parents to still go to those events, still be engaged, even though their kids are getting older, that doesn't mean they can, you know, completely be like, oh, you good, but I don't know.
That could be.
That could be. That could be.
Maybe that's also, it's a really great place for our student voice. So, you know, coming from the perspective of a high school student, right, what does, what does parent engagement look like? And what does parent engagement or parent support in your, in your learning look like? And how does that differ even from freshman years? Right? Like, I had a really great conversation last week with a streetwise high school parent who, daughter's senior, right? And so we were talking about how she could build her daughter's capacity and confidence to go and have the conversation with the principal instead of the mother doing it, right? And so that, that worked out, that was positive, but to get student input would be really helpful in creating what that, what that metric looks like.
And this would be another place to take a look at, like you were saying, the disparity in income levels, the racial ethnic groups, the language groups, how does that look from one family? Because it's all about like.
I think for each of the measures and the metrics that are, that are to come, we need to come back with, what is the equity of this? How are we reporting this? We're disaggregated, so that we're all aware.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. With acknowledging along the way that ethnic culture is out, it's very recent, it's a little more intensive, it's culture versus.
So do you want to stop?
I don't want to really like backfler anything, but if you are ever going to make a system where you can see every single one of your kids' assignments, do it for elementary school. Because I cannot count the amount of times that, I mean, I'll be honest, I did at that age as well, but like my brother would come home and he'd be like, hey, mom, we need a post report for an assignment that's due tomorrow. So like at that age, that kind of thing is appropriate, because the student is still too young to really like take on that responsibility. It's such a, like, the big projects where you have to like go out and like things that the parent may need to help. But, you know, like, once you get to middle school and high school, I don't think that knowing every single one of their assignments is necessary. Like, I think it's good to know the tests, like, I've had teachers email all the parents when the test is coming up, just so the parents are aware. But I don't think every single, you know, four minute assignment, you could get a lot of them, I don't think that's necessary if they pass elementary school.
I'm glad you figured out the time to follow this, because this was, you're, you're really good.
Yeah, I was going to say, what we're going to do is have one of us send feedback on the priorities, priorities we have covered in the meeting, on whether we like these measures, and any of the thoughts you have on the ones you've discussed.
And we're going to schedule another, continue to have these work sessions until we wrap it up, if that's okay.
That's good.
So thank, thank you.
So prior, from priority, from all the priorities or primarily from priority six?
Well, if you have, I'm thinking if you have a look at these again, then they have another. So remember, this is will include the measures, not necessarily the met writing.
I think, well, you make a good point. I think we had a good discussion around what we'd asked, but I think you come back and think of anything else or, you know, or something else to add, especially the last two.
The six, seven and eight, yeah. And I really enjoyed the work class.
Thank you for the time. We'll be back then, we'll try to get back as quickly as we can.